Call the meeting to order, road calls.
Arthur McCleary, Mary Watson, Miller Cloud.
Okay. Item number three is discussing possible action on opening and closing graves with Chuck Sullivan and Chuck is not here at the moment. I don't know if he's on his way or. What, but uh.
Think of what we're having.
Ray, did you talk to him about?
Haven't talked to him. She didn't tell me what she said.
Do any of y'all have anything you want to say or?
Well, if uh, yeah, if uh, you know, the closing and the opening of cemeteries, you know, the graves, we didn't really want to quit digging them, but we have to on account of financial reasons. You know what I mean? Uh, the, our money's getting real low, uh, and so we gotta have some help. If it amounts to, you know, uh, we can, we dig fifty to sixty graves a year. That's what we're digging in District Three. I don't know about that one. In District Three, we dig about fifty to sixteen a year. Okay, I, I, you know, uh, the fuel bills, torn up machinery and everything else, it's getting to where we can't afford to do it. Unless we get some help and we willing to work with uh, with funeral homes. Funeral homes get paid for that. They're the ones that make some money, they're the ones that get the money and everything. That's included in a funeral, but they're not giving it to us or nothing. We hadn't asked for it, but now we're down to like seven hands and we're digging that many graves. On my behalf, we can't, we can't afford to, you know, any longer, but if I've worked a deal with funeral homes, if they wanted to pay us the opening and close, uh, not pull them out like we would just a regular contractor, but something to help us keep the machinery and fuel and stuff like that, then we'd be willing to work and, and so I, that's why I'm putting y'all, y'all speak up, whatever how you wanna. Y'all over the cemeteries and stuff, uh, what do y'all wanna do? I mean, do you think it's a bad deal or, or?
Well, we got contractors interested in digging.
Yes, sir.
But it's gonna cost people more money whenever they bury a loved one and that's already an excessive expense. I mean, you know, that, it's just a, a lot of money, you know, all these years, these county cemeteries have provided that, um, to people who lives in Haspel County. And, um, it's just, and we're all very grateful for that, always have been, but you know, it's, um, and I understand your expenses, you're out of, but, um, it's just seems, you know, real sad that, that you have to put this on the families.
Well, the thing about it is the people in the funeral homes are charging for it anyway. We're doing it for them, they get the money for it and they're not, they're not, if you look in there, it's opening, closing of that grave is getting in, uh, I think some of the cemeteries, uh, they've charged three hundred or something, put somebody in.
Did you want to say something, Rob?
Well, I was gonna ask Sean, does the county actually own the cemetery?
No.
So we're actually working on private property?
No, they're all publicly owned.
They're all publicly owned.
No, they're not by the association.
Does it belong to the county?
It belongs to the association that takes care of that cemetery.
The county takes care of the cemetery?
It's in, it's in Haspel County. I would say it's in Haspel County, which Haspel County takes care of any, um, county land that is not public, I would say.
There's a guy that can answer to what you just said, but I don't believe, I don't believe what you just saying is true, but I'm not sure. Does, does the funeral home get paid to dig and bury, uh, the cemetery? Opening, closing, right?
No.
Do we get paid very much?
Yeah. Is there a charge to the family from the funeral home?
No.
No.
Not even think so.
But here, here, here is what, that charge, yes, that will have to be a charge put in for the burial. The funeral home is not gonna pay that. That will be a family expense. I mean, but the county.
But it's an extra expense.
It is, but.
It is, and the, and the, you know, commission, I mean, the, we've always had these graves.
Works for free forever.
Opened and closed by the counties in all the districts, all these years. I would like to see the, you know, the amount of money that been, I know, fuel's up now, but, um, you know, ten years ago, what did it cost?
What'd you spend, what'd you spend on digging graves last year, Billy?
We, we figured, we figured out we spent about thirty-two thousand dollars, but what, the thing about it is, back when they first started that, you just talked about it, and it was good. But the county, like District Three, had twenty hands, but Leo Rees and it was in there, they had twenty hands.
Thirty years ago.
Yes, they had twenty hands working, okay, and, and they had a lot of money, a lot more money, 'cause the revenue's about the same as it was then. Right here in this country, we're in a farm and ranch country. We don't get a lot of taxes or nothing, but right today, we've got seven hands. I'm down to seven hands and that's because we can't make payroll on anymore. I had a guy that, uh, quit that day, we didn't hire him back. I put two guys on part-time. I mean, it, it's not that I don't wanna dig it. I got folks buried in them too and I, and I like, you know, it's not that that's the situation. The situation is we had to pick between digging the cemeteries or digging the graves or fixing roads. I mean, I got a crater up here right now that's in the shop. It's gonna cost me twenty thousand dollars to get it out and I just picked up my tab and, uh, on my ammo, I've got about eighteen thousand dollars in it. You see, and I gotta still, I still gotta keep this other thing going. It's not anything like that. I just wanted everybody here so we could work out something. And I'll, we'll continue to work and dig them if, if we can come to a settlement before it kinda help us on a fuel bill and keep it up. And we're not gonna try to ask on, uh, thousands of dollars or nothing like that.
Isn't being the best, excuse me, is it in the budget for the grave digging? Do y'all put that in the budget every year? You don't?
No, we don't, we don't get nothing out of it. I mean, you know, and, and.
We don't have a budget. We, we operate month to month, yeah, actually, but, uh.
But I, I thought she was talking about her big budget, when you set her money out. We don't set no money aside.
For grave digging and?
Bill, how many, whenever you send someone out to dig a grave, how many people does that tie up?
Most of the time, two, because I tell you, you know, we got, we got eleven cemeteries. We dig fifty or sixty graves a year and I don't know about others, but we dig a lot of graves. And you gotta dig them seven days a week, strain them, stone them, what, you know, and a lot of times, you, you gotta have somebody to help you get that done. You just, in other words, uh, uh, if a lot of people wanted foot over for somebody else that's in there, you know, husband, wife, what, a lot of times, if it's real wet, that cage in. You know, it comes up, everything, you got, it's, it's more of a job than you think it is.
How many hours usually does one grave take?
To dig, it's according if it's rock. Now, if you go over here in Sandboy and you get rocked, it's eight-hour job probably, 'cause you gotta have that jackhammer, gotta pull all that out. Uh, out there's a man that's done it for thirty years, tell him how, eight hours.
Sandboy, we, we talk all rock off and we could talk the whole thing. We rack them up, we clean them. We don't do nothing in the cemetery. One time, sometimes we gotta leave till it dries up to get it out there and keep them tracking it. I've seen hammer on some of that little rock over there for eight hours on a baby grave, three by three.
And then you also have to stay for the closing until the service is done?
Most people don't have family used anymore and when they come to the graveyard, they visit, you can't gush them out of there. You gotta wait till everybody leaves and you may sit there two hours, two, that depends on how pretty it is. If it's cold, they don't hang around. If it's pretty, they'll scatter across the cemetery at quarter and they go look at everybody's graves and it's disrespectful to run them off. So you gotta wait on them till they get out.
And, you know, another thing is on that too is, uh, just like I said, you know, we, we gotta keep them up, rack them and make them, 'cause I wanna do a good job. He wants to do a good job and it's not, it's just our finances that get us. See, a lot of times, we have, we might have one over here at Presleverdy, have one over here at Sandboy, same time. So I gotta get another truck. Uh, we borrowed, uh, we borrowed, uh,
We borrowed out Valentin, we borrowed out Danny.
Somebody's gotta be over here, somebody's gotta be at Sandboy. So you got two rigs tied up, two hands tied up. Then you gotta do the same thing when they come in after the funeral.
So it's over half of your crew?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So see, what happens is, uh, especially if it's in during the week, then we gotta pull somebody off a dump truck, send them that way, you know, and a lot of times, they have third person to run around in case they have problems, but you can't pretty easily.
Ninety-five percent of the time, I use one employee for graves. And, uh, I mean, if he runs into something that he needs help, of course, we send him help, but biggest majority of the time, we use one employee.
I got it.
I got something.
Go ahead, Marvin.
Well, I'd gladly card you, Paul, do it yourself. That's what I've done. On Fridays and Saturdays, I was out there ninety for five percent of all, I had one guy. And it don't cost that much money to dig a grave.
Okay, you're my partner and I am, 'cause I can't do that with one guy and, uh.
One guy and me?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, God, but I don't get paid comp time. I was out there ninety for five percent of every grave that was dug when I was in office.
Great.
I got four hundred and twelve there.
Listen, I'd like to, you know, road bridge and get started, but I'd like to explain from, but horses mouth, I suppose. Okay. How many of you commissioners are pun broke? I mean, are just almost broke? There's one. Larry?
I'll show you my financials, unprovided by the clerk's office and it's your one side.
Clark?
Well, no, I'm not broke. My register's not broke.
Do y'all get, uh, so much money from COVID relief or something like that? Is there something things that? Can I ask how much I get from that?
Six hundred and thirteen thousand. How about six hundred and thirteen thousand?
That's all? Okay.
That's not for the district, so that's for the whole county. That's for all the employees up here in the courthouse and everything.
Okay.
We didn't get any of that?
Well, it's anyway, if, you got some, when we paid some of your help over here and stuff, that is for the whole county. That, that's six hundred and thirteen thousand for this courthouse, the districts and everything. And I didn't get much of it either. Tim, is it for the whole county or?
Yeah, I can, if I can, I can explain. I got, um, I got part of, I got part of my back.
Yeah.
It was six hundred and thirteen thousand and over four hundred, over three-quarters of it come because of the sheriff's office in the jail.
Six hundred and thirteen thousand?
Six hundred and thirteen thousand. We got, we got roughly, we got roughly thirty thousand dollars. I can't say that. I, I'd have to look. It was roughly eighteen thousand, I think, what we got back out of the thirty-six thousand that we spent out of cash accounts. Um, the rest of it is in an account set over there, but three-quarters of that was able to get back through the COVID relief because of the sheriff's office in jail. Now, I can tell you that every county around us, their sheriff's office and their jail took their portion of it back. I've sat here in several commissioner meetings and only asked for my, my budget money or my cash money that was used for some employees and some reimbursement that was done out of my cash accounts for some items that was purchased and I didn't get that money back. I only got my lake patrol money back that we spent for an employee. So the rest of that money's there and it's used for anything for the county, for county government. It can be used for anything for county government. But the reason it was reimbursed is because of our salaries and benefits was done by the governor to say all of that was COVID-related for law enforcement side. Now, that's where that, that's why, that's where that money is. It's set over there. That can be re-appropriated next year, um, or it's, I mean, it's a cash account. It can be used for anything. But, you know, um, it's there. I could've been a horse's butt and said, I want all my money back, but I didn't. Because I felt that, I mean, because I felt that it's county money. So that's there and that's in an account.
But also, I will say that, I don't know about every office, I'm speaking for my own. We were not approached with what we needed and that COVID money was also available to us if our needs had been put on that COVID budget and honors were not considered when that money was asked for, or we would've also had earmark, you know, money for that as well.
But you can't depend on COVID money every year. You can't depend on that to pay to dig graves.
Saying what was, you know, what was stated about COVID.
You can't depend on money because they said we had a pandemic last year. That money's not guaranteed every year to continue to.
Well, I think we're kind of drifting off the reason we're doing that.
Yeah, was there a point, Bobby? Was there a point to your question on the, on the COVID money that's sitting there?
Well, I heard it was more, you just said, how much did y'all get now?
Six hundred and thirteen thousand.
Six hundred and thirteen?
How much did each commissioner get?
It's sitting in an account. We haven't taken any.
The one I got over the car, it said that each county commissioner were getting eleven thousand dollars.
That's from the C I R B. That, that goes up to July. That was, but that was sent back from C D two on the appropriation to seventy-seven counties. And they get that every month. And it could go down from nine thousand to eleven thousand, if I'm not mistaken.
But it, it'll be over in August.
Yes, July, I believe is the last month.
No, that's why we're trying to get the budget and get, a lot of that was saving, we're saving it and trying to make payroll. 'Cause right now, if it hadn't been for that money that we got, I couldn't make payroll.
Because you're funding down and your road and bridge has been down and that was supposed to offset those appropriations for that last year.
Yeah, it, it's, it's all black and white. You can look it up. It's all to the public, but that money, we, we're just trying to make enough payroll, really.
The third money that they started, the third of it, they started directing straight to the counties, which we split airplane down to the penny. Uh, it was intended to fill in the gap for the downfall in the, the economy due to COVID and it pretty well did. I mean, it evened it out with that ten, eleven thousand extra a month. But anyway, you know, there's been a lot said about grave digging and whether it's legal or not legal, but I have an attorney general opinion here. I'd like to read on it. Our, uh, DA didn't make it, but it's talking about maintenance and improvement of certain cemeteries by county commissioners. "In any county of this state, the Board of County Commissioners is hereby authorized and empowered to utilize employees under its jurisdiction and county-owned tools, machinery, equipment, and materials for the purpose of opening and closing graves and maintaining and improving publicly-owned cemetery or other cemetery within the county not owned and maintained by an individual or private organization. Provided that where appropriate, a reasonable fee not to exceed the actual cost of the service may be charged for such services."
He hates old, it's here. He's just at the other office waiting. Uh, we're over here if I wish you would.
It says here, "The Board of County Commissioners hereby authorized and empowered to accept and use monies and any other items of purpose for opening, closing graves and maintain, maintaining and improving said cemeteries and carrying out the intent and purpose of this act." We can charge, but we can't overcharge and that's why we're getting as we're going overcharge. If you get a contractor, they probably gonna charge you seven, eight, hundred, thousand dollars. It's not that. All we was looking for is enough to keep this stuff flowing. And I don't know, that's, I don't know whether that's fair or not, but, uh, if you can come down and stop at the office, I'll show you all the figures and facts on what money we got coming in. You know, that's like I said, I got a twenty thousand dollar bill over here. I gotta meet a cat probably next week or so. And, uh, I don't know, if you guys, if y'all could done it cheaper, that's great, you know, I'm glad. And if you can come out and dig ease on that, if you want to, I'll pay you, I guess, you know, if you can do it that cheap, 'cause I can.
Now, y'all, uh, excuse me, Bill, y'all, y'all do this, uh, for individuals? Somebody in here does? They're over the cemeteries. Over the cemetery?
No, I'm here as a contractor. I will dig, I will dig the graves. I will, I will dig them. I'm not here as a cemetery board member, but I will put my two cents in.
So you're.
You're talking two cents?
But I will dig.
You're saying you're, you're available to dig graves if the county can't do it?
Yes.
At what cost?
Um, it's anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand dollars. Well, then you go do it, Sandra.
I don't, I don't want to do it. I don't have time to do it.
I have to, I have to truck equipment from any, all over the county. You have to pay people. Well, then I, but then I also, if it's using my equipment, I have to pay to keep it fixed and pay to, pay to keep it upkeep and pay fuel and everything and pay employees and pay your contractors.
We're not here to talk about that.
Let's get off the topic here, but, uh, Blake, do you have anything you'd like to be on the funeral record?
No. I mean, if you have some questions, I'll answer questions.
And you guys, if I was a cemetery, y'all can, I'll speak up and say that's what you think's right and all.
Well, there has to be a common, I mean, there has to be a solution that we all have to win.
I follow all the same, that's why I said we got that.
This room. I'm sitting in the other room, wondering where that you are.
You're the one who opened it.
Yeah.
Our district attorney just rolled in, so we'll, we'll hear from him on this matter.
My apologies. Uh, I thought I was, uh, doing the right thing and in the right place when I was. No, I don't need a chair. I've been sitting down for the last twenty minutes, just waiting for it to end. Um, so I've missed some of the discussion where we are. But let me just kinda give you the, the legal on, on this and then just, I wanna make the point that I'll give you the legal, if you can or can't or whatever, but policy decision is, you know, each commissioner, that's you guys as the elect, that's your decision to make. I, I can't make that for you. I might give you a suggestion. I might tell you my thing, uh, if pressed, but the policy decision will be up to y'all. So the, the legal analysis is if you want to, you can. If you don't want to, you don't have to, essentially. That's in sort of the, the layman's terms. There were some older statutes that said you're not to do it. And then there was a, I think, an attorney general opinion that came out and said, well, yes, you can do it. And I know that, that Larry and I had a conversation about this and I probably weighed in a little more than, than I should've as far as whether or not you should uh, from a, just a fiscal standpoint. Um, and I think my suggestion to Larry at the time was if you wanna charge for it, you can. Uh, if you're just doing it for free and losing money, it's, if it's not a county-owned property, there's really no county business there. And so that's, that's where it sits right now is if you wanna do it, you can do it. Uh, if you're concerned about the funds, I suggest having some sort of, uh, fee structure for that because it's, you know, it's man-hours, it's, it's equipment, it's gas, it's, it's fuel, excuse me. It's all those things, um, that the county is paying for. And so to, to charge for that service is not unreasonable. And I, I wouldn't presume to tell you what those fees should be. Um, but that's my suggestion is that if you choose to do it, then, and you wanna charge a fee that you're welcome to.
We need to be made whole. We'd be.
Right, let me silence this, I'm sorry. Uh, that's correct. Uh, if, if the county commissioners were to choose to do it at no fee, that's, that can be done. That's entirely up to, to y'all as a board, if you want to do that. Um, and if the county commissioners wanna say, we're just not gonna do it anymore, you're okay to do that. I, you know, there's, the, the wisdom of doing that is something different, right? And whether or not that carries over, you know, what the electorate expects from y'all, those, those are things for you guys to, to navigate. But as far as if you have to, if, if you're prevented legally from doing it or required legally from doing it, you're not. You have that option available. And I apologize for running late this morning. I didn't bring the, uh, the opinion with me. It looks like you guys might have some stuff here already, but that's kinda where it is. I, I call it, you know, it's, it's up to your fielder's choice, for lack of a better way to describe that. And it's probably something that, that the three of you should decide, count of why, rather than district by district, so that you have some consistency. That would be my suggestion to you.
Yes. Who, who has the liability for, if the commissioners decide to do this? Would the commissioners be liable for it or the county be liable for it if something happened?
That's, you, we're talking about some sort of injury with equipment or something goes wrong or any kind of something we'd get sued for, right?
Yes, digging into another grave or, or something like that.
It'll water the money, of course, that's us anyway. Um, at the risk of sounding like a lawyer.
I have, I have Ethel's opinion.
Yeah, but the, the, the real question is who would have liability? We, we're having the same question come up in these, all these McGirt stuff and if there's a arrest or prosecution. And so would we have a liability? Probably not. But any person can be sued by any other person at any given time. And then it becomes a fact-finding, you know, whether or not that person, the person being sued, the defendant's in this case, the county, whether or not we're entitled to be dismissed and not carry liability. It still takes work and effort on our part to get to that point. Um, so there are some, some liability waivers that can be signed that, that can transfer some of that. But as far as a unilateral, my saying, well, if we do this, no one can sue us, I couldn't say that today. Because it, it, it just depends, right? You know, what if the, we take a backhoe to a cemetery and we load it on a trailer and we take it out there on Saturday and nothing happens at the cemetery? So like the cemetery would have liability for what happens there if dig into, uh, you know, the wrong grave or break a headstone, something like that. Well, they go, comes off without a hitch, they load the trailer back up and they're driving back to the barn and they get in a car accident. Now it's gonna have liability, right? So I, I couldn't say blanket that, that the county wouldn't have liability, 'cause I think that there's some liability you can never get rid of when you're the county and you're out on the roads doing anything. So, um, could they, could they do a waiver? Yes, and I'd probably recommend that if, if they elected to do that going forward. We'd probably create some kind of waiver, uh, particularly as it relates to the, to the privately-owned cemetery. We wouldn't wanna take on that liability. So, you know, we, some of those things, yes, but, you know, as far as a bright line, I would say probably.
Chuck, I, I was asked by Commissioner McClary to send a message to Dusty Burksong, which is, which, which is with ACO. He is over the, the insurance with ACO. He is our, he's our guy when we have an issue and Dusty and I have a pretty good relationship. So Commissioner McClary had asked me to send an email to him, reference if the county would be liable or, or anything like that. And the, the email said, "Dusty, the commissioners are requesting if they dig graves, will our insurance cover in case something happens to equipment, worker, and/or grave?" Dusty sent back, "ACO Sig would cover everything that you mentioned in your below email while digging graves. Employees would be covered under working comp liability while digging graves. County equipment would be covered if damages while digging the grave. If the grave is damaged due to negligence applicable to digging the grave, it would also be covered." So I, I got that to Commissioner McClary at his request and then I just called Dusty and I said, "So, all these cemeteries?" And he said, "We've had, we've had to take care of this issue on the eastern side of the state in the past and ACO has never balked at taking care of that issue." Said it's, it's a, it's a thing that the commissioners have done. But that goes back to our ACO insurance that we have, I guess we have money, county money, to take care of those claims, correct? Is that how that works? There's county money set aside, 'cause I know Billy Don and I both had to pay quite a bit of money out on our own claims. I mean, I had to pay ten grand and Billy Don had to pay.
That's the deductible part of it.
Yeah.
Well, is it legal for the county to compete with private industry?
I wouldn't suggest entering a field competition, but let me try and answer what I think you're bidding to and you can stop me if I'm. I think you're talking about a scenario where the county has a fee for digging a grave for a private cemetery and then a private company has a competing bid. Uh, I would simply suggest that you just have a flat rate and if they wanna use the county's grade and if they want to use someone, I wouldn't get in any kind of bidding product or anything else. I would set a flat rate and you could probably do a mileage, you know, how far from the barn, how many hours, you know. how far from the barn, how many hours, you know, you could have all that information already, and so you can have a, a flat rate, that, that might be, you know, for, for easy math, you know, that flat rate might cost one cemetery a hundred dollars one Saturday and another cemetery two hundred dollars another Saturday, but it might have to do with distance traveled, number of graves dig, dug, um, number of hours, that sort of thing, but you, if you've got your set rates, then if a private entity wanted to come in and, and compete for that, they could, we would simply just have our, our rates, does that, does that make sense? So we're not, we're not entering into some business to compete, we're just saying, this is the cost of, of, you know, it's not unlike when you go to the court clerkship and you wanna copy something, it's like, it's like the page, you know, Kinko's could do it cheaper, but that's their cost and the freight, what it costs them to run that thing.
Well, that's kind of what you read, wasn't it Billy?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying, is uh, we're not trying to compete, we just wanna flat rate to help us on machinery and keep our fuel up, it's not that we don't wanna dig them, I got folks, friends and everything, and all these cemeteries are, we got, you know, these people, that, that's why they're here, because we all got family, but it's getting down to our, our part, it's, it's, we're, we're getting lower money and just to have a flat rate, uh, just so it helps us buy the fuel and, I don't know, some of them others, they say they can dig them for nothing, I guess, I mean, uh, it don't cost nothing and they do it on there in one man, well, now I know, I've dug, we've dug a lot of graves, and I've dug since I've been there in Randy, and you can't just use one man a lot of times, you hit rock, you gotta have a jackhammer, and uh, you got mud, some of that is, you know, some of these over here, like over in Tony's, you know how it gets wet in there, and, and what happens, you gotta take all that out, we bring in topsoil, we rake those graves, uh, am I telling the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and then, uh, but, uh, you know, you can't do it, a lot of times, you know, we, we, we work in there for, for six hours and that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and, but we bring it all back, and every grave that we do, we straight, we put flowers on it, everything else, we come out, we come back, bring more topsoil when they, and everything else, work them over.
We haul the rock off.
Yes, and we haul all the rock off, I don't know what they do or not, but when they come in, do you ever have to haul any rock off? Yes, sir, and that's what.
That's probably costing you six to eight hundred dollars for, out of your budget, salary or whatever on your.
Yeah, but, but all I'm saying is, we'll, we'll try to do it at a, a lower fee, but we need a little.
A little bit, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Rick, did you tell me in a discussion, I mean, you had about this, that we, you've done a little bit of research and as far as you could tell, that ev- every county east of I thirty-five provided this free service to the public?
That's what Todd Martin told me, at Mallworth.
Yeah.
Out on Black Mike.
It ain't like we're the only county that's doing it, all the counties are doing it.
That's what he said, he said that he didn't know of any counties that didn't dig graves. I don't know about the Jordan.
Black and I told me they charge us seven eighty two a week, that's what they pay, and uh, and fifteen hundred on the weekend, and we don't want that.
Is that Black, that's you fault?
Yeah, you fault, sit there willing to pay seven eighty two a week and fifteen hundred on a weekend, and I said, well, that sounds way too high for me, but, I'm just throwing some figures out there, what they told me.
Y'all don't charge families for opening and closing graves, is that right, Blake?
That's correct.
They're gonna pack that on to the funeral cost, you know?
Well, I guess they have.
Yeah, they, they have to.
Yeah.
That would increase, you know, a family's cost of, of their loved one, and it's already high enough, you know?
We bury as many people for them as we do anybody else, we bury a lot of people that don't even live here, they bring them in out of state.
Yeah.
But our cemeteries are cheaper.
So, I'll, I'll ask it, which is the cemetery right here in town?
That's the city.
That's the city, okay.
Does that pay to get them?
My, my grandma was, we had her funeral last July, so.
It does cost, I think, for the city.
Rather don't.
But you have to buy your own food.
Yeah, you buy the cost.
Which covers for the burial and gas.
Cause we have Saturday service for grandma and city workers were there. But I don't, I don't know the pay for what, sorry about that. But it, I mean, the, the commissioners are in a tough spot here, they're, they're the stewards over these public funds and, and they've, they're trying to, to do right by everybody and, and uh, that's kind of almost impossible to do. Do right by somebody, you're gonna be wrong with somebody else, that's sort of, kind of what happens here, so, you know, they, they're in a tough spot, whatever it is they decide to do, but from a legal analysis, they're okay either way, if they decide they're not gonna do it, there may be some political fallout for them, but they can, they're not breaking any rules, and they can decide they're going to do it, and they're not gonna break any rules, if, if that makes sense, so, they do have that discretion, and it'll be up to them to decide how they wanna move going forward.
I personally would like to see the county to continue this service for the people and, and for us to try to figure out in-house here, maybe some way of getting the money to do it with.
I agree.
That's my opinion, I, uh.
I agree.
But, uh, yeah, 'cause we, you know, all we can get, some kind of money to keep our stuff up, that's it, because we dig fifty or sixty graves a year, like I said, how many do you dig, Blake?
I hadn't kept up with it, Billy, I think we got seven cemeteries, but uh.
We dig sixteen.
Sixteen in the last month.
Yeah.
It's, it, it's been brazier than normal, and I, I'm sure that's due to COVID, you know, the winter was.
Well, winter time is always more.
Yeah.
People passing and all, but, but you know, for the last thirty years that I know, well, even longer, I mean, has this ever been a problem with the budget that much in the past? And I know fuels went up, but you know.
But it's, it's not just the fuel went up, we don't have revenue around here, you've got, you've got farming ranches here, you know, and we don't, we, we just get a fuel tax in, out, out the sales tax, but uh, you got about the same revenue you did thirty years ago, it didn't come up much, you don't have it, and you got people here that, that they work in the Skogee, McAllister, Fort Smith, places like that, they buy the gas, they go, people move a lot more, you know, and it gets their groceries and stuff out of there, uh.
I buy my gas here, or Kenta, and my groceries here, I try to spend it on, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that, you know.
And just buy new tires and done Ford, I try to spend my money here, you know?
Yeah, but uh, it's, it's been, it's been from, uh, from District Three, it's been a challenge, kinda, you know, because when I come in there, y'all was robbing, ciphering gas out of one truck, putting the other truck.
Yeah, if it wouldn't have wrecked him, he wouldn't have handled it, he would've had to, he would've kept it going.
And, 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 but they keep it going, and since we've been there, we've tried to work every angle we can to do all we can to keep it going, and it's pretty rough, I can show you the fact for it.
Well, I don't doubt it, I don't doubt it.
But as far as that, I got my folks over in San Boyd, uh, go through there and uh, I, I, I like to help them keep them up, and Randy takes real pride in doing his, um, doing his work, and that's why these guys here.
Well, we appreciate it.
Yeah, but I, it's not that.
Appreciate it.
Anybody wants to, but, you know, love to make it any harder, you know?
Do all the cemeteries, do they go ahead and measure where the plot's supposed to be before it's dug?
No.
How does, I, I guess, how does a county know where to dig this grave?
You meet with the family, the road department generally meets the family or the commissioner and you mark the grave, make sure there's nothing else there.
I know about Clark's, 'cause it's measured for, for him, you know, the head of the, uh, the cemetery board.
At Keona.
Yeah, at Keona, at Keona, now, just Keona, that's all I know about.
Usually in one of the other cemeteries, we just meet a family member and they show where they want it, and we mark it.
See, that's more time you put into it too, a lot of times you get on, you have calls, you meet them, you have to meet them, put them on, dig them in the right place.
Well, that's what I was bringing up right there.
Yeah, I mean, he showed, the family showed them, we put it for him and the family.
Well, the county commissioner could meet them there and they could stick a flag in, like Sandra did for me, didn't take her five minutes, but she had it right out there, you know, anti-off, but, but it does take time, you know?
I have met with several families mark graves.
Yeah, it takes your time, you know?
And you have to be careful where you put them, and you need to ask a member on the board if it's okay to do here.
Yeah, if you're not sure.
If one that did not get done that way, you know.
Well, probably not, you can tell if somebody's there or not, it's cool, but.
And at anti-off, and I'm sure others, they, you know, we've asked people to mark their graves if they want this spot, of course, they can be moved, that's why you still need to meet with the family there before you dig, but, but hopefully they've got that spot marked, you know, with their initials or their name, and so we know that that's someone's, you know, spot they want, but.
And then they put headstones up, if one of the spouses or someone passes away, you know, if it's a double headstone, if they named on it, then the family needs it, but it can be pretty tricky to make sure where to put someone, make people happy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I think the whole issue is, what Billy said is not whether you want to or not, it's whether you can afford to, right?
Yes, that's all, that's all it is.
Yeah, I mean, you got se- seven hands.
Yes, sir.
Pull two out, you're down to five.
I got seven hands and two of them's gonna be part-time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not that you don't want to, like you said, it's, it's the, the expense of it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you got the same money coming in as you had twenty years ago, with equipment, three times what it was three twenty years ago.
Oh, yeah, I put in seventeen.
And the fuel is not getting cheaper.
No, sorry, it, it cost us, uh, since this fuel started going up last month, it cost us a thousand dollars, whatever it is.
Cars went up fourteen percent last month.
Yes, sir.
I think if we got guys loose during a regular forty hours, if we've got them loose, we could help them dig them for a fee, uh, during a regular forty hours, as long as we got guys loose, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, okay, and we don't wanna hijack nobody, it ain't just eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, we don't do that much, just enough to help us keep afloat, that's it.
And Billy figured we could dig them for four hundred a week, five hundred on the weekend, that's fair enough there, about here, Blake.
I'd like to see a stable list for today and discuss amongst ourselves and see if we can come up with a solution within the counties before we make a drastic move.
Yeah, most of the time.
Yeah. Larry made motion table, or, I'll see.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's opinion, I mean, it, it, it's, it's the whole county, everybody, I want the funeral homes, I want the, uh, cemetery people and everything, because uh, you know, I'd like to say I got folks buried, friends, you know, I guess.
You know, all that.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Billy's cloud.
Yes.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say on this topic before we adjourn the meeting?
I would like to say, we have, and I know all cemeteries have a positive on digging, um, and we're fixing to come into our decoration, we was wondering if we could get them cleaned before, if that's possible, I do know anti-off has seven, uh, and I'm sure, uh, Garland has some, and everybody else, uh, but they are gonna come start mowing, we do have a cleanup day on the seventeenth, our decoration is on Mother's Day, and we were wondering if that could be possible.
You want the roads fixed, where you can drive to work?
Larry, I don't, when I was in.
That's basically what it amounts to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking if.
You can do that the next time you're out there with the burial, you know, for that matter, surely be, uh, burial before Mother's Day.
We try to take care of all the cemeteries on Memorial Day, we create the roads, uh, in the cemeteries, we haul gravel if they need some, I think, Tommy said some, put in, whatever you need done, we'll do it.
And we appreciate it.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I, I don't think we've ever turned a cemetery, when they said they needed something, we don't turn them down, we do it.
But that's the problem, I think.
What's that?
The cemeteries are, in my opinion, the cemeteries are taking advantage of the county using free services.
That's not true. That's not true, we're not.
No, I'm not wanting a job, I'm also on the cemetery board, but I also am a business person, can see a business point of view, as in, you want, everybody wants roads fixed to get to work and do everything, but they also want them to do cemetery stuff and dig a grave, haul in dirt, make sure everything's ready to go, and they only have so many people and can only do so much stuff.
Well, just like I said, they can go clean up those piles of dirt at anti-off the next time they're out there with the grave, we're not taking, I'm not taking advantage, I'm asking for that.
Well, no, but what I'm saying is, is you want, but they go to dig a grave and then they gotta clean up some graves and they can't go fix a road.
They clean up the piles of dirt left over from the grave being, you know, being covered up.
We always take the dirt to the washout.
True you do.
And we, they can break water.
To me, this is one of the few things that the county can still do.
Yeah.
For the people, and it helps everybody, 'cause everybody's involved in that, and everybody has, you know, burial.
It's very much a shared thing.
And it's.
Everything that y'all do.
It's everybody's tax money, you know what I mean? If we get a month down broke, we can't dig them anyway, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I hope that, that's a.
Get money, uh, you know, I, I, I think we're in a lot harder shape than a lot of funeral homes, don't you? You know?
Everybody, they have to make a business, it's a business, they have to make a profit.
Well, that's more different though, we're running down there, a business, you know, we got, we gotta have money to run and operate it, and we're not gonna ask for a kid, and I tell, and I, and Tony or, I don't know anybody else here, but we do do a good job on it.
You're excellent.
And, and if you ever asked us for gravel or come out and get it, have we ever turned you down?
No.
You know, he's over at that cemetery there, but whatever they want, we try to get, quickly get there.
I mean, I think we all, all three districts try to take good care of cemeteries, and I'd like to see it continued, but anyway, if anybody else don't have anything, well, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, did you have something, sir? Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.